I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have with us this evening Pastor Jamie Otten from King Springs Baptist Church, 3732 King Springs Road. I'd like to call on Pastor Austin Otten to come forward and give the invocation and lead us in the pledge of the flag. Everyone, please stand.
Pray with me. Father God, we come before you tonight and we're just so grateful for the blessings that you have given to us and to this city. Father, we thank you for the way that you have led in the leadership here. And Father, we pray that wisdom and direction would continue to be provided for them. Father, we were reminded even yesterday of the fact that there's so much in this world that is hurtful and evil. And Father, we are reminded of the fact that ultimately our hope is in you. And so, God, we pray that as we work together as citizens and as leaders, that, Father, we would do so knowing that our ultimate goal is to show the love of Christ to others and to do what we can to ultimately impact them for your glory and for your benefit. And so, Father, we just ask that in all things that we say and do, God, you would be honored tonight, for we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, agenda changes. We don't have any agenda changes this evening. Hold that thought. I'd like to say Mayor Bacon is ill this evening, and so I'll be presiding over the meeting. Item number three is the mayoral report. We have two items on this agenda. Item A, and everybody get your dollars out. Everybody get your dollars out. We have a proclamation and recognition of Veterans' Poppy Day Weekend, which is November 10th through 12th this month. I'd like to invite Barbara McGee to come forward from the American Legion to accept this proclamation, and I'd like to turn it over to Councilman Welsh to read the proclamation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. McGee, a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna, Veterans' Day Poppy Weekend. Whereas America is a land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died in the field of battle, and whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, and whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of its debt throughout the distribution of Memorial Flower. Now, therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, Georgia, do hereby proclaim November 10th, 11th, and 12th, 2017, as Poppy Weekend, and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing a memorial poppy. In witness whereof, I heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Smyrna to be affixed upon this sixth day of November in the year of the Lord, 2017. A. Max Bacon.
Would you like to say anything?
If you'd like to say something. Thank you. As everyone should know by now, because we're here twice a year doing our, getting donations for distribution of the poppies for our veterans living and those that have passed, for veterans and military and their families. 100% of your monies go directly to this, so anything donated is so appreciated. We'll be out in force this weekend at Kroger on South Cobb and Concord, Walmart at East-West Connector and Floyd Road, and Kroger Atlanta Road at Church Road. It's still considered Smyrna. So, we'll be out in force for three days taking care of business. We'll also be at the memorial service at the park here Saturday. So, help us out and donate. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item B, under the mayoral report, is recognize the Smyrna Blue All-Star Rookie League, eight and under, 2017 Georgia State champs. Can the team and the coaches please come forward? This is the second time in three years that this team has been the state champions. They won the championship July 26th in Warner Robins. So, I'd like to introduce Coach Chuck Martin, who will introduce the team and the coaches and say a little bit about the team and what it means to play for Smyrna.
Thank you, Councilman Norton. Yes, we actually won on Father's Day this year, which made it extra special, getting to be out here with our boys. It was a long road. Let me introduce the players and coaches here. We have Brian Stevens. We have Landon Ryan, Luke Linder, Asher Adams, William Beckus. We have Big Poppy. His name is Andrew Biggers, but we call him Big Poppy, and he enjoys that. We have Luke Darcy, John Paulino. The blond kid over there is Hey Stevens, Cameron Dennis, and at the end is Jackson Martin. Couple of other of our coaches are Davis Linder and Corbin Adams. A little bit about this team. We formed together, had a really nice road to the championship. We faced a little adversity along the way. We lost our first game in the state tournament and put us behind the eight ball. We had not lost up until then. The boys responded in kind and reeled off a couple of victories, including against the team from Warner Robins that had beaten us previously and took home the championship. A little bit about Smyrna Blue, what we're so excited about and what we wanted to thank you guys for. Obviously, we thank you guys for coming out and recognizing us. But more important than that is travel sports has become a little different than we were kids, when we were kids. And a lot of times when a son or daughter shows a proclivity to a sport, they immediately take them out of the community and put them into a club team or a travel team. And there are certainly pros and cons to that, and I won't get into it. But one of the costs associated with it is the loss of community. And these boys, because you guys make decisions where they can come together and play, and your Parks and Recs Department do a terrific job of keeping our fields nice and playable, we baseball players are very particular about our fields, and we appreciate that. And because men like Ethan Shapiro back there volunteer their time and run the Smyrna Little League organization, the end result is that these boys get to come together and not only play the sport they love, but they get to have that sense of community. They go to school together sometimes, some of them do. They go to church together. They go, they have playtime together. They play together. Families vacation together. So, when we play other teams where they're from different areas, we can always tell because, excuse me, because the joy is not there. They may win, they may lose. They may be really terrific baseball players, but they don't have what we have, which is the name on the front of the jersey. We have Smyrna because we love each other and we play together. The things that you guys provide, these boys have memories that last forever through their lives. And so, we are very grateful to you guys for providing that, and we have given a special gift to you guys for that. It's a signed program that we came up with and a signed copy from our championship.
That's pretty awesome.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Y'all will stay up here for just a moment. We're so proud of you, and there's another story to go along with this championship team, and it's worth mentioning this evening. Before I begin, do we have Samantha Timmons and Jared Simmons here from the Braves? Okay, very good. There's a player on this team that has overcome unbelievable adversity to be a part of this state championship team, Jackson Martin. And Jackson was diagnosed with Perthes Disease right before his sixth birthday, and really all he's wanted to do this whole time is play baseball. Through time in a wheelchair and leg brace, Jackson never complained, just kept his eye on the prize of playing baseball again. So, last spring, the doctor agreed to let Jackson play if his dad would coach the team, and so his dad was glad to do that. And even though he went through quite a bit of pain, he was able to play, and so he was very joyful about that. Start of the year, Jackson had 60% bone regeneration in his hip, moving quicker with less pain. And then, fast forward to his eight-year-old baseball season, he played every day for nearly six weeks, and they pursued their goal of winning the state championship together. So, not only did the season end with Jackson finally getting to play after going through Perthes, but he got to be a part of this fantastic state championship team. And we have representatives from the Braves here who wanted to be here to celebrate this, and I think you've got something for the team and for Jackson.
I'm with the Atlanta Braves. Work with the youth baseball a lot. So, actually was in contact with the team after they won, trying to get recognized on the field for their accomplishments. And we put together kind of a day that recognized a lot of champions from around the area at different tournaments, but they were the one of the teams that came up and had the chance to come do that that day. It was a Sunday in August, so it was not long after their championship run. But I just kind of want to touch on what the coach talked about here with community. I grew up playing the same sport, obviously, still working it. You know, I wanted to be in it all my life, playing, but you know, that always can't happen. I grew up in a little league, just like Smyrna, didn't really play travel ball. My mom wouldn't let me play on Sundays, so that wasn't a thing that we could do growing up, but it's something that I have lifelong friends from. I just went to a wedding two weeks ago from my best friend from when I was young, just got married. So, it's something that you boys are going to be friends forever from these teams like this. You know, you're in the same community, going to the same schools. Hopefully, high school is very positive for you, win some games there, and maybe a state championship in high school would be amazing. But yeah, we have just a couple small gifts and tokens to just say congratulations and I hope you keep playing well. And you know, obviously, we're right down the road too, so come to some games, enjoy it. But we got our contact information ready too, so thank you so much for letting us just come and congratulate this team and be here with it, so.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
No, absolutely. Please do. Jackson, you want to say something?
This'll be interesting.
I just love my baseball team on Smyrna Blue. They definitely helped me in getting to that state champion win. I thank the coaches for helping me whenever I got into a slump. I did a few times, they helped me get out, and I just, I love my dad and I love everybody on that team, so I thank that team.
Absolutely. Glad we could come out. Oh, no, for sure. Yeah, yeah. We got contact and it'll be fun.
Thanks for coming out.
Absolutely. You guys enjoy.
Thank you.
We have an election tomorrow, both for State Senate District Six and for City Council Ward Three. Are there any candidates here that would like to speak briefly about their candidacy, just a minute or so? And then, if you want to speak at the end, you're able to do that for three minutes, but come on up if you'd like to, if it's ready and you'd like to speak. Saw a couple people raise their hand. Come on up.
Please forgive me, when I saw that little boy there talking, that just, it just broke me up. But I want to say that I am so pleased to say that I'm running for Ward Three, and I'm Marshall Moon, and I do live here in Smyrna. And I've learned a great deal, sir, since I've been running for this candidacy. And I'm not a man of fancy words, so please forgive me, but I want to say that I'm speaking from my heart, that I love Smyrna. I honestly do. And through this election, I want the people to know that I will be working for the people, that I will give my heart to you. And I make this vow, not only to the people, but I make it before my God, that I will do my best for the people. I'm not a God, but I can say this, that I will give my heart and I will be loyal to the people. And since I've been running, sir, the question is being asked, what did I want to see to change? And that is to have more open government than ever before, because the people that I have been speaking to, they're saying we're not being informed on a lot of the things that's been taking place. We need more open government, more now than ever before. And I was also questioned, did I believe in term government? Yes, sir, I do. And I want the people here to hear me and hear me well, that I am speaking from my heart, and I mean in every word that I'm saying, sir, that I will stand for the people. And the government, and as I had stated before, and I'm going to say it again, the government was not created to make people to be slaves under the government, but the government was created to help the people. And this is what I have been saying since I've been running and the people that I have met with. And I tell them, I said, "The government was created to work with the people and to help the people and not the people become slaves." And I'm not saying that to get a war started, but that's just, but that's my opinion. And I want to say that I thank God that I'm having this opportunity to run. It gives me a great thrill. I have been excited about this campaign, and what hurts, sir, is that the people that I have came in contact with, a lot of the people that I've talked to, they don't know what ward they live in, and they don't even care about voting. And I'm going to say this, and I want to make this very clear. This is our God-given right to be able to vote, to let our voices to be heard. And I just thank God for the freedom that we have, that I have, that I can run, and that I am able to vote. And I say to the people, please, please, get out and vote. Let your voices be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. And another candidate for a brief presentation?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and Council. My name is Marilyn Blackburn, and I am running for the Smyrna City Council Ward Three seat. I've been a resident of Smyrna for 17 years, and during that 17 years, I think that I have definitely committed my time, my energy, and my efforts in helping to enhance the quality of life here in Smyrna. I look forward to being on the council, and I look forward to helping work in different ways. I think Smyrna's a very diverse city that is attracting many individuals, many families, and businesses. And I do believe that I can be a great asset in helping to continue the growth of Smyrna. I look forward to joining you soon. Thank you again, Mayor Pro Tim and Council. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Any other candidates here this evening? All right, we'll proceed with the agenda. Item four, land issues, zonings, annexations. There are no land issues, zonings, annexations this evening. Item five, privileged licenses. We do have one. This is a public hearing, item 5A, privileged license request 2017-391 Beer and Wine Pouring, 2590 Spring Road Southeast, Chetanad Foods and Bakery LLC, doing business as Akis Indian Cuisine with Anthony Arputaraj as agent. Is the applicant here? Okay. Ms. Adler Jones, would you please read the background?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Anthony Arputaraj will be the registered agent responsible for the sale of alcohol at the referenced location. He has been given a copy of the alcohol beverage ordinance and attended the mandatory alcohol responsible workshop. He has agreed to abide by the guidelines set forth by the city of Smyrna ordinance governing the sale of alcohol. A background investigation was conducted by the Smyrna Police Department, and it failed to reveal information that would preclude issuance of this particular license. With that said, staff does recommend approval.
This is a public hearing, so anyone wanting to speak in opposition to or wants to make public comment for this item, we need to come forward now and be sworn in, and then we'll call you back up to speak at the appropriate time. Okay, I'd like to call Councilmember Welsh. Calling Councilmember Welsh.
I'm speaker on here. You are Mr. Arputaraj?
Yes, sir.
Are you aware and have passed the test with the police department and everything that allows you to become a licensed distributor?
Yes, sir.
Are you aware that we do regular stings throughout the city? And have you trained your people to ID everyone that comes in and so forth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on this?
Any other questions? Okay.
Hearing nothing else at this time, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the privileged license request 2017-391 Beer and Wine Pouring License at 2590 Spring Road for Chetanad Foods and Bakery LLC, doing business as Akis Indian Cuisine with Anthony Arputaraj as the agent.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. Passes 5-0. Item six, formal business. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Item six, formal business. Item A is approval to award Georgia Firefighters Cancer Benefit Program to GMA/Germa and adopting a resolution to add membership in a fund of Georgia inter-local risk management Germa and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Ms. Adler Jones, background, please.
All legally organized fire departments in Georgia are required by House Bill 146 to provide certain cancer benefits to their firefighters effective January 1st, 2018. This program provides financial protection to firefighters and their families in the event that they contract cancer attributed to the job. The program provides a lump sum cancer benefit as well as long-term disability coverage. The city only needs to obtain coverage for the lump sum portion of the program, as the city of Smyrna already provides long-term disability coverage for our employees. Staff recommends approval to award the Georgia Firefighters Cancer Benefit Program to GMA Germa and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
This item of business is for Councilwoman Bluestein.
At this time, I would like to propose approval of Resolution 2017-19, the approval to award Georgia Firefighters Cancer Benefits Program to GMA/Germa and adopting a resolution to add membership in a fund of Georgia inter-local risk management Germa and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. Passes 5-0. Item seven, commercial building permits. There are none. Item eight is the consent agenda. Ms. Adler Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, approval of the October 16th, 2017 mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the October 16th, 2017 pre-council meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the October 12th, 2017 committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item D, approval to hire Janet Lieberman as Keep Smyrna Beautiful Director. Item E, authorize Atkins Park Tavern to operate a beer wine specialty one-item cocktail station beyond the boundaries of the premises of Atkins Park Tavern, covered by the license at the STAR 94 Wolfstock Event in the downtown area, Saturday, September 29th, 2018, 11:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., and Sunday, September 30th, 2018, 11:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. Item F, authorize Atkins Park Tavern Restaurant and Bar to operate a beer trailer or station at the following events with specified dates and timeframes. All of these events are city-approved events. First one is the Spring Jankow Festival. First one is the Spring Jongle Festival, April 28th, 2018, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and April 29th, 2018, 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. City of Smyrna Birthday Celebration, August 4th, 2018, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Taste of Smyrna, September 15th, 2018, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and the Fall Jongle Festival, October 27th, 2018, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and October 28th, 2018, 12:00 noon to 5:00 p.m. Item G, approval of Atkins Park to extend premises to include the sidewalk and seven parking spaces directly connected to and in front of Atkins Park Patio, Saturday, January 27th, and Sunday, January 28th, 2018, for their, for events, event setup is February 26th, 2018, for the Seventh Annual Smyrna Oyster Mardi Gras Festival, January 27th and 28th, 2018. No street parking is required for this event. Item H, approval of 2018 Fifteenth Annual St. Patrick's Day Celebration Weekend in the Market Village, Friday, March 16th, 2018, 12:00 noon to 10:45 p.m., and Saturday, March 17th, 2018, 11:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m. Atkins Park Tavern requests street closings for the 2018 St. Patrick's Day Celebration to include West Spring Street from Atlanta Road and terminating at the end of the fountain at the corners of Atkins Park Tavern and Corner Taqueria. Item I, approval of Atkins Park Annual Crawfish Bowl, April 28th, 2018, from 1:00 p.m. to 1:45 p.m., and Sunday, April 29th, 2018, from 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Atkins Park requests street closing to include West Spring Street from Atlanta Road to King Street, connecting to Spring Jongle Festival Event Site, King Street continuing to Village Green Circle. That is the consent agenda.
Do I hear?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please vote. Passes five zero. Item nine is committee reports. We'll start this evening with Councilwoman Andrea Bluestein.
I just wanna thank the people that came out from Ward Three on Saturday to our ward meeting. It was such a beautiful day. I can see why you might not have shown up, but anyway, we appreciate your coming and hope that you have a good week. I guess our temperature's gonna do one of these up and down numbers again, so, but it'll be okay. I guess fall is finally here. Thank you.
Councilwoman Corger Welsh.
Thank you. I just wanna encourage everybody to get out and vote tomorrow. It's an election, it's not a lot of people on the ballot, but it was brought up, it is our right to vote. And everybody get out and please cast your vote for whoever your candidate is. With that, I yield.
Susan Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have several things I would like to announce about the Parks and Recreation Department. One thing that's happening, on November the 9th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Community Center, there's gonna be a public input session for the North Cooper Lake Park, and they're looking for input about ideas of what the community would like to see the future of that park to look like. I believe they're talking about the bike trails. There's already bike trails there, but what else would be added to that in terms of the bike trails? And that's November the 9th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the Community Center. Let's see, there is also, many of you remember Deputy Chief Mike Brown that passed away while on duty in February of 2015. He faithfully served the Smyrna Police Department and the citizens of Smyrna for thirty-eight years. There's gonna be a memorial wall dedicated to Deputy Chief Mike Brown at the Police Department on Atlanta Road, and the ceremony dedicating the wall to Deputy Chief Mike Brown will be held on Friday, November the 10th, at 11:00 a.m. And I wanna invite the public to come to that as well. And the other thing that's happening is on Saturday, November the 11th, is our annual Veterans Day Ceremony. It'll be held at the Veterans Memorial Park, which is located between the library and the city hall out here. And the ceremony is organized and managed by the Smyrna Veterans Committee, the Veterans Memorial Association, and the City of Smyrna through the Parks and Recreation Department, and the Smyrna Rotary Club, and then also Chick-fil-A and JWSC Real Estate. The speakers there will be Lieutenant General Stephen Arnold from the U.S. Army, retired, and Rear Admiral Robert P. Wright, U.S. Navy, retired. And they will both be the guest speakers, and they have spent over thirty years in service to our country. Whitfield Academy, their concert band will provide music for the ceremony, and the Campbell High School ROTC cadets will present the colors. South Cobb Drive High School Chorus will provide a musical salute to the veterans. So, hope you can attend. With that, I yield.
Mr. Doug Stoner.
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have any specific committee report, but I do wanna talk about some issues that have occurred in some neighborhoods recently on the southern side of the city. We've had basically some folks coming through neighborhoods and trying to see if they can find unlocked cars and steal things out of that. And over the last several weeks, the Police Department Chief Lee and Lewis Defense, our community relations from the Police Department, have been working with neighborhoods. And this is just a reminder to folks, particularly as we get into the Christmas season and the holidays, to just make sure that you're aware of your surroundings, make sure that you're keeping your car locked, if it's even sitting in your driveway. Unfortunately, folks are looking for opportunities, and if you see something suspicious in the neighborhood, please do not hesitate to call 911. Something our chief says constantly, says, "If you think it's not a life-threatening emergency, that's not a reason not to call 911." It's, "We don't know what the emergency could be, so you need to call 911, and then we'll sort it out if someone's in the neighborhood that shouldn't be there." So I just want that as a reminder to folks as we get into the season, just to be a little more diligent. And also, the other issue there, too, is a lot of folks have packages delivered to their hometowns. You know, get with your neighbor. If you don't do, say, an Amazon key or something like that, where you can go pick it up, get with your neighbors and make sure they pick up your package if you're not gonna be home for a few days, so it's not just sitting on your front door, 'cause you're just asking for somebody to come take the package. They're not gonna come in your house most likely, they're just gonna take your package. So just some reminders to the folks as we get into that time of the year. Thank you, Your Honor. That's all I have.
Mr. Ron Peddell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few items. First, on the committee report side, finance administration. We have scheduled our November meeting for November 14th at 4:30 p.m. in this building. We have three items on the agenda. A general services agreement for our engineering firm crafted by our legal counsel, just to make sure we finish that one undone item. And number two, we have an updated IT policy prepared by our staff, and we'll consider that particular policy statement and make any changes to it at that committee meeting to recommend to the full council. And the third item, we have a budget amendment, an FY17 budget amendment that we need to get into the November 20th meeting queue, and so passing that on that committee meeting will allow us to get on the full agenda for that. It's a technical item as a part of our budget and our management of the finances. And then there will be other items as the committee has held in the breast of the committee that may be discussed, but those are the primary items on the agenda. I just wanna, on a personal note, wanna remind people that with the dark coming earlier and the weather cooling off a little bit, the kids are out there earlier, or it seems like, well, the sun going down quicker. We just need to be very vigilant about safety. We see even today a pedestrian or a bicyclist being hit, and we need to make sure that we use extra caution. We'll have more discussion about pedestrian and bicycle safety here soon, because as a part of Smyrna's ongoing effort to make sure our community is as safe as it can be, given how fast it's growing, we wanna be thinking about all aspects of that, and we'll discuss that at a future meeting. I do wanna note, on a personal note, the passings of a couple of friends of mine. Buddy Purvine, a longtime Realtor in our community, former president of the Smyrna Business Association, former president of, I guess, Optimist Club, and a couple of others. He will be missed, Buddy Purvine just passed away last week. Reverend Shell Osborne's mother passed away this weekend. She, her service is this evening, and she is grateful to be onto her next destination, I am sure, and the family is celebrating her life today. Also wanna note sadly the passing of one of our staff members, Jennifer Bennett's mother, and our prayers and thoughts are with her and the family as well. And then finally, the staff has helped us to finally wrangle a meeting with the United States Postal Service to discuss a longstanding challenge on the ZIP Code designation and part of Smyrna that has been annexed within the last twenty years. I look forward to that. That's on the 15th in the morning here in this building, and we're gonna continue to follow that until we rope that bull to the ground. But with that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Ms. Adler Jones, anything to add this evening?
I just wanted to also express my condolences to Jennifer Bennett and her family regarding the loss of her dear mother.
Mr. Cochran, anything to add this evening? Andrew?
Yes, I'd like to just remind everyone to vote tomorrow. The polls will be open from 7:00 to 7:00. There will be six polling locations open in the City of Smyrna. The Community Center will take voting for Ward Three, and the other polling locations will be for the District Six candidates for state, for the state seat. The, every citizen in each ward is not necessarily in District Six, so you can look it up online, put in your address, and find out if you are in District Six. There are many Senate districts in the City of Smyrna. So, get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10, show cause hearings. There are none. Item 11 is citizen input. We have five citizens who've signed up. It looks like a couple of them have already spoke, but you're welcome to come back. Alec Bakary, 3459 Shawnee Trail, comments?
I understand that the Windy Hill Project will start in the spring. Now, this is a $24 million taxpayer project. We had a referendum, again, on the Park Barn for 22 million. Also, Concord Road was 20 million, and we only had a town hall meeting afterwards all finalized. Since the mayor isn't here, my comments will be hopefully passed on. We need, again, a city town hall meeting. I've talked to many, many people. They have no clue how that is gonna go, and they need a night with all of you or whoever to answer questions and give input before you finalize the program. Twenty-four million of taxpayer money is a huge amount, and this council has not stepped to the plate to have a citizens, a city town hall meeting where everyone's involved and come and ask questions. I understand there was a city meeting on it over a year ago. Things change. For one, that no one can believe, there's gonna be two overpass bridges where for residential, they'll go drive over it. From South Cobb to Atlanta Road is only eight tenths of a mile. I find that they're gonna be an eyesore, let alone waste of money to have two overpass bridges. They're gonna stand out. Whoever came up with this idea ought to, I recommend meet with a psychiatrist tomorrow morning. I think this is absolutely absurd that we don't have overpass bridges for traffic in the entire city. But for the city to be in the dark for 24 million of their money, I find it's not open government, and that's not the way a democracy works. And I hope you pass it on that it's not too late for us to have an opinions and ask questions, because this impacts the whole city. I, like many other people, use it, and will be looking at it every day. So we need an update city town hall meeting and advertise it in the utility bill flyer to get people involved to see what's going on. Secondly, I'm proud of the three of five candidates on the term limits. Three of them are four-term limits. The fourth one didn't even answer a yes or no, and only one voted no. So I hope you still consider, no one stepped to the plate to consider a referendum on this. We need open government here. It's the last two years of your tenure. And I hope, again, the city town hall meeting on Windy Hill, we have questions and term limits, two big issues that you should address in the near future. Thank you.
Mr. Marshall Moon. You already spoke. Do you wanna come back? Okay. Mr. Tim Rigsecker, 1115 Pinehurst Drive, Lobby.
I just wanted to talk about the recent article in the Marietta paper, you know, about having, we've had four lobbyists in the past, and we have one, three presently, and one will, has a possibility of being on the board again. And the reaction that I was gonna, I was hoping Max was gonna be here tonight, because the mayor, because he made this statement, he didn't see a problem when he worked for the post office and being a lobbyist, and I just wanted to, just after doing some careful review, that is a class-one felony and punishable, being a federal employee and a lobbyist is a class-one felony punishable of five years, up to five, minimum five years in jail and $100,000 fine. Thank you.
Kristy and Michael Seagraves, 1420 Collier Drive, Trucks/Development.
Good evening. We have lived in our home for, okay, okay, okay. We've lived in our home on Collier Drive for 28 years, and there's a large development going in just right around the corner from you. And it's Paramount Homes, and they've been bringing big trucks through our small little neighborhood, driving over the curbs, driving over the storm sewers, driving over the intersection down at Collier in Atlanta. And today I was homeworking, and I actually witnessed four different trucks drive down Pine Tree and come across my yard, my neighbor's yard, and my other neighbor's yard. And I got a video, so I wanted to share with y'all the video to see what these trucks are doing. And I'm gonna go ahead and give a disclaimer. I might have, like, shouted out at the truck driver a couple times, 'cause I was really frustrated, so. So this is just, this first picture is just a video of the corner, and then that was the third truck that came through. I don't know if they can hear it, but... Get out of my yard! Sorry, I was yelling. They drove over our storm sewer. Seriously? Over all the rocks that are right there, over the neighbor's yard. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous. So I would like to ask if someone, we have spoken to Mr. Sajid, I know my husband has, and I know he's not happy with it. Yeah, they're just, I mean, they're just driving right over the, and... That is ridiculous! Okay. After I finished the video, finished filming it, how do I stop it? I'm sorry. I wanted to play again.
That's good. You got it.
Right there. Get out of my yard! Oh, sorry.
You can say it, nobody else can.
Okay. So, after they pulled off, he actually honked at me. I'm sure he was just saying ha-ha, 'cause he saw me out there in the yard. But my husband had suggested where the road is, that when they exit this property that they're excavating, they could take a right, go all the way down Pine Tree when it becomes forest, makes a large loop, comes back out, crosses over Lee Street, then takes them straight out to South Cobb Drive. And they can come in the exact same way. That way they're not making any hard rights or hard lefts, driving over the curbs, driving over the storm sewers, and doing the damage that they're doing. 'Cause this is not gonna happen for just a few weeks. Because this is not gonna happen for just a few weeks, this is gonna happen for months. So I just wanted to make everybody aware. Thank you for your time.
The last one signed up for public comment, Anthony, I'm gonna butcher the last name again. Did you want to come back up, sir? Okay, okay. If there's no other business to be brought before this body, I call this meeting adjourned at 7:49.